Hello, everyone. It's really nice to see you all here. This is the Bennington Select Board meeting. It is Monday, August 14th, 2023, and we are here in the Bennington Fire Facility. We will start tonight's agenda by our meeting by having select board members introduce themselves, starting with Sarah. Good evening, Sarah.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Jean Conner.
Ed Woods.
Lovely, thank you. And also with us tonight is Town Manager Stu Hurd, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent meetings every single time, and Josh Boucher on the camera for Cat TV, which we very much appreciate. So we'll begin the meeting, the evening, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
All right, and next, Jean, would you read the town's vision that guides our work?
Just like old times.
Yes.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next up is the consent agenda for the purpose of discussion. Could I have a motion to accept?
No.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, anything that hasn't already been discussed with Nancy on the minutes or with Stuart on the warrants?
I just need to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
On the 24th.
Let's see. Stu, I just want to reiterate for the public more than myself that any time we see anything related to Leadline Project, in this case, it's Casella, on page 1, 330655, it's almost to the bottom, that's all reimbursable.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say that. I love saying that every time I see that. This may have been on warrants before, and I have missed it. It's page four.
Of which?
Uh, let's see, which one is this? Check Warrant Report Number Six.
Okay.
Okay. H A C H, is it Hatch Company? It says service contract. What's that? Do you remember?
Yes, Hatch is the service companies that services the very, I think it's the very speed drives, the wastewater treatment plant. We've had a four-year process with them. We're upgrading, I think, some of the homes at the facility, so this is a contracted expense.
Great, I knew you would know. That's it.
Anyone else have any?
Anyone question?
No, please, go ahead.
The play-by-play design for the little part of the playground, was that the final payment?
Is the final payment for the work done? I believe we made, are we still holding any funds at all, Dan, under the contingency?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
They didn't put it on the order.
Yes.
Any other board questions?
Yeah. On the liquor license applications, am I mistaken or didn't Donovan's close?
I'm sorry?
Donovan's, the bar out on Main Street? Are they still open?
Looks like they're new owners.
It could be under new ownership.
Okay, thank you.
It is a new license, so yes, most likely it is.
A new owner, okay, great.
Any other board questions? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yeah, it's abstaining. All right, okay. So.
Last meeting, there wasn't an officer, in minutes, it wasn't mentioned, it was an officer.
I am a tenant. Okay.
Not an officer, but there wasn't actually.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so, next up is public comment. Want to remind everyone that we're going to follow the protocol that we have, and if you have any questions, a copy of it is at the podium. Ed is our timekeeper for this evening. You have three minutes, and you'll get a 30-second warning before your time is up. Please remember, public comment is a time for you to share things that are useful to all of us, and it is not to address things on the agenda. When each agenda item comes up, we will allow comment then, and again, it will be a three-minute comment. If you, please make sure that you keep your comments specific to the agenda item, so that when we're on agenda items, rather than using it as a jumping-off point, okay? So we will remind you if you start to go off-topic. All right, with that, let's mix it up. First up is Nancy White to talk about agenda items.
Nancy White, Bennington. I have two questions or two issues. First, I'm going to ask if this select board is following the Vermont Open Meeting Law. From what I can find, it says the public has the right to participate in conversations on items that are on a select board agenda at meetings. A few years ago, this select board stopped letting citizens ask questions after the manager's report. The manager's report is an agenda item, and I believe has been on every select board agenda for as long as we've had a select board, which is at least 50 years. I don't understand why citizens can't ask questions. For many of us, Stu is bringing up issues we're hearing about for the first time. So I'd like to know if you're following the Vermont Open Meeting Laws or if you are not. Second, three or four meetings ago, I brought up the fact that our town rec center needs about a half a million dollars' worth of work. This select board has known about it since the end of 2021, but has failed to put it on an agenda last year or this year. And I can prove what I'm saying, because this is a list our officials put out dated December of 2021. And when I look at the list, it's very specific about the work that needs to be done, and it says it's $400,000 to $600,000 worth of work. How can people in Bennington know what's going on and how we're going to pay for something if you won't put important issues on the agenda? So I'd like to ask, is there anybody on this select board that will get this on the agenda for the next meeting?
So Nancy, I know you missed the last meeting, but if you want to review the minutes, that this is a time for public comment, it is not a time for discussion. So we'll take your comments under consideration and address them as is relevant.
I'll say, I'll say again, I brought this up three or four meetings ago. This should have been on an agenda early last year. As I said, I can prove that our officials knew about this in the end of 2021. The town of Bennington taxpayers own that rec center. We pay every bill, budget, and bond for that rec center. Nobody's going to help us pay that half a million dollars, and we deserved to have this conversation last year, and I really hope you can get this on the next agenda.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, next up, Jack Rossermanley to talk about community cafe and refugee resettlement.
Hello, Jack Rossermanley, Bennington. I'll start with refugee resettlement. ECDC, the Refugee Resettlement Agency that works here in town, is thrilled that three families came to Bennington, new families, at the end of July, and all three have been settling into their new homes here in Vermont and getting adjusted to Vermont life. Many of them already have driver's permits and are studying to get licenses, they've already begun applying to jobs, and they bring a whole new set of skills and experiences to our community. We're talking about people who speak three, four, and five languages, who have international business backgrounds, and many other skills and talents in their families. So it's very exciting. I just spent my afternoon with the four kids who've just come to town doing some childcare while the parents were in a class at the tutorial center, and they're great kids, and they're very excited that they're going to be starting school soon, and they will be beginning school in the S V S U. So a lot of happy news, there are more families who we expect to come in the month of August, and ECDC is taking donations of home furnishings, and also anyone who's interested in volunteering, spending their afternoon doing the kind of fun stuff that I did today, hanging out with cool kids, or meeting with parents to help them study for driver's tests, or showing them the community. We are also looking for folks who'd be interested in volunteering to help people who are fresh not only to Vermont but to the entirety of the United States learn about life here. So if you're interested, you can get in contact with me at J R O S S I T E R M U N L E Y at ECDCUS.org.
Yeah, we're gonna remember that.
And for everyone on Cat TV, you can play that back later. For everyone here, you're gonna have to find it on Cat TV to playback later. So it's an exciting time in refugee resettlement. And we're also very pleased that we'll be giving a fuller picture of what resettlement means generally, and for Bennington specifically, at the next select board meeting. There will be a full report, and will be on the agenda, so you won't hear from me about this in public comment, because it's an agenda item. So that's resettlement. I also want to mention that there are exciting things afoot with the community cafe. The last time I was here, I was able to share a very exciting news that King Arthur Flour is partnering with the cafe. We serve all of the sandwiches at the cafe on homemade bread, and King Arthur Flour is giving us quarterly deliveries of flour so that we can make the bread using that flour. And we're also having sourdough bread available. Everything at the cafe, including that sourdough bread, is available on a pay-what-you-choose scale, and we've had people who-
Jack, you're at 30.
Thank you. There are people who have paid nothing at all, and there are people who paid $20 for a loaf, so if you're interested in coming down and doing your bread shopping, there's a limited amount of bread. Very quickly, at the upcoming cafe, 1:30 to 3 o'clock at Jeepix, 121 Depot Street, there will be live music in addition to our full menu of items, and if you're interested in learning more, BenningtonCommunityCafe@gmail.com or facebook.com/BenningtonCommunityCafe. Thank you.
Jack, one question for you.
Yes?
Are the folks that have resettled here, did they participate in protecting military people?
Many of them have, yes.
Good.
Either they, or they are very closely related to people who would, and so they would be in mortal danger if they were still in Afghanistan.
Well, I think I can safely say on behalf of the entire select board to tell them welcome.
Thank you, I will pass that message along.
Thank you, Jack. Let's see, Sam Rustino, public comment.
Sandwich, you know, Bennington, Vermont. At the last select board meeting, there were a strong statement by our chairman stating that the meetings have turned toxic. I find that to be a very harsh word. I never sent that that was said, I can't help but not think about it. I don't think ever meetings were toxic, maybe uncivil at some point. And at the last meeting, I found, I couldn't look over my left shoulder, that there was an officer in the room. Why was that needed? I mean, was something gonna happen at a select board meeting that an officer was of the Bennington Police Department, was, had to be requested to be at a select board meeting? The only thing that I can recall is that Mr. Hoyt was speaking on certain items and was asked to leave because he was out of order, and he was reluctant to leave. That's my only earliest recollection of a uncivilized select board meeting. But it just troubles me, and it's contradictory. One minute you're saying that something has to be really done before things change, and at the same moment, you're asking for public input. Secondly, at the town manager's report, we hear EPA at the charge site, the armory. We had a green light, things were gonna be happening, a new armor was gonna be built. They pulled out of the deal, and now we're back into discussion again about PCBs in the discussion. Has a date been set, and when we're gonna be having a discussion? It was supposed to happen in August, and I haven't heard of a date yet. Same way with CTC on Benmont Avenue. That's another issue of building that needs to be established. This is our to-do list that we have to work on, our infrastructure that I've always been talking about since March, and I've been holding back. Yes, at times, I appear to have a sanctimonious attitude. I have a lot of high standards for my town, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right, next up, Clark, thoughts?
Good evening, Clark Adams, Bennington, Vermont. Since the last meeting, I've been pondering some of the things I heard that I found worrisome and disturbing about the public comment section, and forced me to sit down and do some reading. And pretty much since before this country was founded, there's been debate between leadership and a populist about people speaking their mind, the a's and n's, to the point where I guess even during World War I, the Espionage Act was used to jail people who didn't toe the party line in regards to the war. I recall, here in this town, we had this maybe still ongoing public debate, and I wouldn't say crises, but a significant issue about a state rep who left office because of vile and unwarranted racially-based attacks on her that were deemed to be disgusting but not illegal. And the town, a great number of people are still waving the flag that this is horrible, you're a racist town, you know, people should be put in jail for saying things that I don't like or that make me uncomfortable. What I found very uncomfortable was as you were pronouncing your new standards or reinforcing standards, there was a police officer sitting over there. I remember there was a police officer here before for one gentleman who was somewhat boisterous, who was removed, and your tone and presentation, and mine, when I came across, if not argumentative, but demanding. And for me to look over my shoulder and see a police officer in here, it further amplified my concerns. I served this country honorably for a total of 25 years, and I swore to protect and defend the Constitution, and our Constitution is quite clear that everyone in this country has a right to express grievances and request or redress of those grievances from our government. Of course, no one has the right to threaten or inflame violence, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I've never heard or seen anything like that during one of these meetings. But I have heard people who were quite heated and emotional about the issues at hand. And I just want to say-
Clock here, 30 seconds.
Well, I'll end it with, I was appalled by the environment that that pronouncement produced in my mind, and you know, I'm a big guy, I've been around a few years, I've seen a lot of ugly things, but I did not like the idea of a harsh presentation coupled with the presence of a policeman here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Clark. Ned, I am trying to, oh, Ned, come on up and you can tell, or my ability to read handwriting is getting worse. Some kind of loans?
Housing.
Housing loans, okay, thank you.
Right, Ned Perkins, Bennington. Three months ago, this select board made what I consider to be some very reasonable revisions to the town loan policies, when it agreed to vote on the B R L P loans in open session, while it would continue to delegate the processing of the generally smaller housing loans, which have a limit of $25,000, to the town manager. This seemed reasonable and fair to me. I don't see why a homeowner looking for a little help putting a new roof on his house should have to appear before this board, which might seem to be an intimidating process. Having said this, I was surprised to learn that on July 19th, the town manager granted a $100,000 housing loan to a limited liability corporation registered to two employees of one of the largest real estate developers in the county, hail resources for the renovation of a house on Pleasant Street. When I asked the town manager about the size of this loan, he explained, "The policy allows for housing loans approved by the manager at $25,000 per unit." This is a four-unit project. Well, I guess if you read the fine print, that is what the policy says, but I don't believe that this is how it was sold to the board back in May. This is what Stu said to you right before you voted. "The housing loans tend to be no more than $25,000. They tend to be very focused on an individual property where the residents meet the income guidelines, or in fact, the homeowner meets the income guidelines." So they are very straightforward. So we felt that rather than put an individual property owner through a lengthy process with select board approval, it would be much easier and more streamlined if we were to handle it in-house. Well, in fact, this loan was for much more than $25,000, and its terms of interest-only payments for the first 16 months, then principal and interest for a long term of five years at a 25-year amortization rate could hardly be called straightforward. So I wonder if this board is even aware of this loan, and whether it really wants to have a policy in place with a loophole that would, if you extended it to its logical conclusion, permit the town manager to potentially make a million-dollar loan for a 40-unit project without any oversight by the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ned. Kelly Carroll, Riverwalk, August 19th.
I'm gonna, my name is Kelly Carroll, and I'm from Bennington, and I'm gonna defer on the Riverwalk portion to Mary Ellen, because she's gonna speak on Bennington Cares, and they're co-hosting. But can I use my three minutes anyway?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to give some feedback on some of the comments this evening, because I, as most of you know, attend a lot of the select board meetings, and sometimes I'm here till almost the end, and I hear what has been said. But a couple of select board meetings here, there were some comments that went back and forth between people who were in the audience, either making, you know, here for public comment or agenda items, and I was able to sit in the back of the room, and I don't want to get into specifics, but I did hear firearms mentioned. So I'm not sure if that was really picked up on Cat TV with the microphones or anything, but I suspect that that might be a little bit as to why there was some presence here at last month's meeting, and although I'm sorry to see the need for it, I do understand, and I just wanted to express, and again, that was from my personal experience at one of the select board meetings, not the last one, but I believe it was the one prior to that, so thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, and then Mary Ellen Munley. Ellen got squashed in there.
I'm Mary Ellen Munley from Bennington, and I wanted to let everyone know that Bennington Cares is gonna be out in town twice in August. And first, as Kelly mentioned, we really thank the Walmsok Riverwalk folks, Kelly and others, for inviting Bennington Cares to the Riverwalk this Saturday morning. And we invite everyone to come to People's Park, which is near the train station on Depot Street, at 10 o'clock. Learn about what Bennington Cares, how it got started, what we've been doing and learning, and how we're thinking about the future. The walk ends in front of Bennington Elementary School on Saturday with refreshments and more information about Bennington Cares, and a chance to see for yourself the results of a collaborative gardening workday that was organized by Bennington Cares this summer. And if you were near the Park Street side of the school on one rainy Friday morning, you might have seen folks from Bennington Cares, from the Master Gardeners, the Bennington Garden Club, school district staff, a Ben L teacher and staff member, weeding, dividing plants, planting donated perennials, mulching, and generally making the place look good. It looks great now to welcome students back for the beginning of the school year, and some of them are bound to be at the walk, some of the people who worked on this are bound to be at the walk, so if you can, you might want to show up and thank them in person, including some members of this select board who donated plants and helped out in other ways. So thanks to all the people who came forward, and to the Walmsok Riverwalk. And then on Friday evening, August 25th, Bennington Cares is gonna be at the Bennington Museum during the Free Courtyard Concert from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And people of all ages are invited to come, enjoy the music, and make a design on paper that will become part of a large Bennington community quilt. The quilt started at the school district's Juneteenth celebration this year, and it's inspired by the stunning quilt designs of the African-American women of G's Bend, Alabama. So come to the museum on August 25th.
Here at 30 seconds.
Learn about the women of G's Bend, and have a square that you make become a part of the Bennington community quilt. And by the way, Jack Rossermanley, a member of Bennington Cares, will be the featured musician that evening.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
Wonderful, all right. So moving on to the next agenda item, we are very happy to have the Bennington Police Department here, we have Chief Doucette and Lieutenant Grandy, yes? Or maybe we don't, we just have you, chief?
Oh, no, I talked way too much the last time I was here. I don't need a timer, starting now. And then I will let Lieutenant Grandy do his piece, and we'll go from there. It's this new thing I'm trying not to talk too much. Want to start out by saying that this weekend was amazing in Bennington, the Bennington Battle Day Parade, and all the events that led up to that. One of my roles is not just as the police chief, but as the public safety director. I have responsibility here with the Bennington Fire Department, and the Bennington Fire Department members do an amazing job every year. Not everyone appreciates that, and all of the work that goes into it, because quite frankly, people just don't know how much work goes into it. And so before I got started on police business, I have to tell you that the fire department in Bennington, you all know, does an amazing job, and they put on a great parade yesterday. Some of you participated in the parade, and I thought it was fantastic, so special thanks to them. The other thing, real quick, without any last names, today is a young man's birthday. His name is Deacon. Deacon is battling cancer very courageously, and the members of the fire department, the police department, all the surrounding fire departments just had an amazing parade for him, and it went by his house. So we just ask that you keep Deacon in your thoughts and prayers as he continues to fight the fight. And an amazing young man, he was here to help us with our bicycle rodeo back earlier in the spring, so we're thinking about him, and we appreciate him. So, New Experience Camp 2023 went off without a hitch. We held that in July, and it was fantastic. We had a lot of happy kids at the end of the week. Some of the kids wanted to know if we could do this for one more week, and we all know that with our staffing issues, that's not possible, that's come up before, so. And following that, we had National Night Out. Some of the board members were in attendance, some of our CPAR members were in attendance. We had amazing partnerships this year, we really did, we had a backpack giveaway, we kind of combined the events, you know, there was haircuts, the Bennington banner was hugely involved, and the members of the community, there was lines, and for those of you that were there, got to see that. We got to meet some new members of our community, we got to meet some existing members of our community, and on the police side of things, we were very appreciative to everyone that came out for the National Night Out, and I think it was an amazing event, and it's just another example of things that we're doing in the community. So speaking of the community, I know that we, one of the things that we need to work on is MOUs, and we continue to work on those. I want you to know the latest MOUs that have been signed, we just signed an MOU with the Department of Public Safety here in Vermont to help us fund a crisis worker at the Bennington Police Department. With that, we signed an MOU with United Counseling Service. Lieutenant Grandy and I will be part of the process to help locate and hire a crisis worker for this year, fiscal year 2024. That crisis worker will be assigned to the Bennington Police Department 24 hours a week, and we're hoping to make great strides with having a crisis worker at the Bennington Police Department, and so we're well on our way with that. We're also in the process of working on an MOU with the Bennington Rescue Squad. That MOU will allow members of the Bennington Police Department to participate in advanced first-day training. We will be partners with the Bennington Rescue Squad and affiliated with the Bennington Rescue Squad through the state of Vermont. Squad through the state of Vermont, and we all know that sometimes, although the Police Department struggles with staffing, so does the Bennington Rescue Squad, and together we think that we can make a difference. We're already making a difference, and that MOU is in the infant stages, but we are working on that. Lieutenant Grandy and I have had some meetings, and we're really looking forward to making that come to fruition and getting our people trained. So speaking of staffing, where are we at? Where are we at? We have four recruits currently at the Vermont Police Academy. They have been there for one week, and they are learning very quickly. Unfortunately, COVID has hit the Vermont Police Academy. There are recruits at the academy that are struggling, that are out with COVID, including staff members as well just after Week 1. So we're going to monitor our people and make sure that they're staying healthy and getting things done, but hopefully we are able to successfully put these people through the academy, and we'll have them on the road by the end of December, beginning of January 2024. With that being said, we are about to hire a Level 2 certified officer from another agency who is very interested in working with the Bennington Police Department. He will start with us on August 21st, and he'll be on FTO until he goes off to Level 3 training in February of 2024. We also have another candidate that will be attending Level 1, Level 2 training in September, and he'll work with an FTO until it is time to go to the academy again in February of 2024. There's lots of discussion and lots of talk about the Police Academy, and next academy class going all the way to 24 weeks, which is a long time. And the FTO process is just like this, it's a field training officer process, I'm sorry about that, so that's what FTO means, Field Training Officer. So we have officers that are trained and certified to be field training officers, and the new officers will ride with them to see how we do things in Bennington, see how things are done in Bennington County with all the paperwork and all the processes with the state's Attorney's Office and things of that nature. So there's a lot of training coming up involving the Bennington Police Department staff. We have fair and impartial policing training, which the Attorney General's Office will be presenting here in Bennington. As soon as it was announced, I did ask for that, so we don't have to send our people to the academy. We're going to actually do it right here in this building, and a lot of our annual trainings are coming due in the next couple of months and have to be completed by the end of December. But I'm not going to stand here and tell you all about the trainings, and there's just a lot of training that is coming down the pike. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Lieutenant Grandy, who's going to tell you about a lot of exciting things that are going on in the department, in our IT world, and other things.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, Ken.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me time to speak about some of the things that are going on at the Bennington Police Department. Thank you all for being here. So IT, as you know, that we've been working really well with Bennington's new IT Director, Nick Cave. He has been a, just a breath of fresh air for our department, bringing new things to our department with some of the IT development that we realized that we needed to work on, and he has just expanded upon the things that were already in place, and working with him has just been fantastic. It's just the learning, some of the things that he's provided is just amazing. So one of the things that we were able to secure is our new whiteboard, Promethean Whiteboard, that's been installed in our conference room slash now training room. Nick Cave has set that up so we can do all types of trainings, virtual, and have meetings in there with our community partners, you know, virtually, as well as working with our command staff on our monthly meetings, specifically looking at data, the heat map, and other things that are real-time, instead of printing something up from a week before, preparing it, and being ready for those command staff meetings, and having everything there during our command staff meetings. We're able to do real-time data, and the command staff can actually see that data and ask questions, and we can develop, you know, action plans to hotspots in the community. The other thing we have is we deployed our mobile data terminals. We've had those in the past, but we have new ones that have just been deployed. They're all installed and running. Those mobile data terminals are exactly what they are, they're computers in the cars, but they are, give the officers access to do everything touchscreen, as well give them alerts to incoming calls for service, and then they, instead of actually communicating with the dispatchers or the communication staff via radio, they can, and again, real-time, see the information that's being deployed by the communication staff, and they can start making their way to where the complaint is being entered. And what also allows them to do is has them have access to our ValCor system, which is our CAT RMS system, our records management system, and that allows the officers to be on the road more and be able to complete certain reports that don't require a lot of detail, so they can get their workload cut down by doing some work out on the streets. The other thing we've added to our cruisers is our e-ticket program. That's grant-funded through the Vermont Highway Safety Office. The e-ticket program allows printers to be in the cars, so whenever the officers make a traffic stop and identify a violation, they can, again, with the MDT, just point and click, and then once there has the violation, it can just print out right there. And everything, as they do that, it gets entered into our ValCor system, so that's one less thing that I have to do, entering the information when they bring the paper tickets back. The only thing we're waiting for on that is to go live on the e-ticket program, is we're working with ADS, Agency of Digital Services, with the state of Vermont, on some access to information, and once we have that, hopefully this week, we'll be able to be up and running on that. One of the last things that we've, is our new body cameras. As everybody can see, I've got mine on today. We're learning, we've had body cameras since 2017. We were one of the first in the state. I'm proud about that. So this is our new generation. The other system we had is a legacy type of equipment, and this new body-worn camera allows us to do a lot more, be able to, less time for the officers downloading videos for court and stuff like that. Now we can just cloud share, and it makes it a lot easier than individual officers, you know, burning disc, you know, you have four officers at a scene, and they all have to burn not only their body cameras, but they have to burn, you know, download their cruiser cameras. Everything talks together, you plug it in, incident number, and we can cloud that, share information right with the state's Attorney's Office and other departments that require those videos. So data, 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 that is my life. So I am working on the 2022 Traffic Stop and Race Data and Use of Force. That is due on Tuesday, August 31st, to the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council, excuse me, not training anymore, of Office of Racial Equity. This is, we're still going through the quality assurances of the data, making sure everything has been uploaded and entered. You know, data is just as good as you enter it, so we're going through 2022. It's been a little more difficult than this year, than years past, and other data that you've received, because, again, ValCor is a new system to us, and, you know, it's been a learning curve. The requirement, getting that data and doing the audits are a little more labor-intensive in a learning curve than our old CAT RMS system, Spillman. I had just perfected that pretty much when the state decided they wanted to switch to ValCor, so, but we're getting there. So that should be completed sometime next week, and I'll be happy when that's off my plate. And we don't actually submit that, we just justify everything and make sure everything is correct, and then the Governance Board submits that to the academy. Any questions on any of the...
Can you mute them?
They can.
They can.
Yes, the officers can mute them, but they have to say why they're muting them. So what they would do, part of our policy is, is that they can't turn the camera off during an event, but they can mute them, and they have to say they're going off. Let's say they're talking to the state's attorney on a scene. They can mute them, but then they have to reactivate them.
I believe I heard the chief say that somebody from UCS will be working with the Police Department 24/7?
No.
Okay.
So right now, we have access to crisis workers from United Counseling Service 24/7. We will have a crisis worker assigned to our office 24 hours a week, okay? So that's how that's going to work, with our goal is to have someone assigned 40 hours a week. This first year will be funded through the state, and our goal is to come to the board and do our presentation when we present our budget in January of 2024, to have a position that is funded by the town of Bennington, so that we can have a crisis worker in place at the Police Department 40 hours a week, both for the community and for the care of our staff. It's twofold, and that's something that we'll be looking for, and we'll be looking for community support, obviously, when it comes time to vote for the budget in 2024. Okay? Ma'am?
What does a crisis worker do?
So the crisis worker comes out, for example, when we respond to mental health issues, when we respond to incidents where someone may want to hurt themselves, or there's a situation involving a tragic event, an untimely death in a family, where someone may need to talk to a counselor or a therapist, and we can have them right on scene and working beside us to make sure that people are getting the care and treatment that they need, instead of just transporting everyone up to the hospital, to the emergency room. That's just one example. Okay? Clark?
Are they in the same way amongst the cruiser? They won't say the same thing, and that has collided and downloaded?
So you're getting car video from the cameras in the car, and you're getting the body camera video all in one, they sync together. So what happens is, when, I just didn't want to walk away from the microphone, so what happens is, is the cameras will sync together, and it's, the officer is required to take that camera, dock it into the docking station in the cruiser, and that way they sync together, and it'll have the officer's name up in the camera view here, and as well, I mean, you can see my name's on that, but when you power that up, my name does appear, so you know which officer's camera is being viewed.
So in terms of capabilities, the officer, like 50 yards away from the cruiser, is there a range on these before they define?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer.
As long as they're in the cruiser.
No, there is a bubble, but once they're synced, they're synced, and they can't be turned off until the officer ends the event.
So there's no range on the vision on it?
No, not there, they, so everything's linked. This is its own CPU, and then the car has its own CPU, and then they just stay linked. Once they're activated, they're activated until the officer actually deactivates it and gives it assigns it an event. The other thing that this system does is that if the chief responds to a call, and he's activated his camera, and I respond to that call, my camera automatically, if I get into that bubble, my camera will automatically sync to his event, and that, our cameras will go into one case.
You have a network on your camera, a network with the cruisers?
That is correct. Yes, and we're leaps and bounds beyond where we used to be five years ago. The other thing that these cameras do is when we walk back into the building, it's an automatic download. We have the capability now of going into the office, and the camera just automatically downloads. Before, you used to have to take the camera, and you had to put it in the dock, and it would download that way, but now with the help of Nick Cave, we were able to set up the office, so it's an automatic, so we don't lose anything.
We did that, because what was happening is officers would come back, they had to dock their cameras into the transfer station in order for it to upload into the evidence library, and what was happening is the officers were typing the report, another emergency call would come in, and they would run out, and they would forget to dock their, take their camera out of the dock. This way, we put in access points, those are some of the things that the IT Director identified as issues, deficiencies that we were having at the department. So now, like the chief said, the officer does not have to dock, it automatically goes through that access point.
So this prevents what, that department's, I think, murders of deliberation? That record, that record, no matter what view or I feel, it's not going to change or can't be?
Can't be. Can't be. Can't be. Sam?
Well, we're on this subject of cameras. Cisco has a system that, on a temporary chair that was on 2024, it's a camera system. Anything in the future, pointing something up like a monument plaza, where there's activity and one of those cameras, like with your onboard cameras on offices?
The, I'd have to look at the technology on that, Sam, and, you know, find out exactly what they're using. I mean, right now, we're, you know, this system here is probably one of the best. This is actually through Motorola Solutions, still called WatchGuard because Motorola bought WatchGuard, but we're very happy with this, and I understand what you're saying. You know, I'll write it down, I'll do a little bit of research on that. I'm not sure we're ready to put cameras up all over town, and that's, you know how that's going to go, it's, people are going to feel like their privacy is being invaded, but I'll take a look at it.
This is a third section of the town, I'm not looking to get into the whole entire town. And while we're on this subject, and isn't that happening, we're going to be getting some of the others.
Just a couple things, we really do appreciate the support from the community. You know, it seems like, and if I go off track, you let me know, we appreciate the support from the community. It seems like especially in the last six or seven months, there's been a lot of support from the community, a lot of cards, a lot of notes, emails coming in, a lot of people coming up and saying, "Thank you for your service." My staff and I appreciate that, because we do try hard to resolve issues. We know that some of the issues the Bennington Police Department members work very diligently on, and sometimes we struggle when cases get to court and we deal with the judges, and it's not a dig. I want to let you know that, you know, 2022 was a very violent year in Bennington, without a doubt, and 2023, we've seen a huge reduction in violence. It's not all gone, obviously, but through our efforts of our staff and our community partners, we've been able to push back and continue doing a good job to keep the community safe. So, you know, if you see some of my staff out and about and you want to chat with them, they're more than happy to chat with you, and even for the people at home on Cat TV, you know, we appreciate any support that you lend to us, so. With that being said, yes, sir?
With all the national moves we see today, with all of the smashing and grabbing and stealing, including everything else, we haven't, I don't believe we've seen that in a while. Hopefully, we won't see it, but is there a policy that our police department would take, or do you think our Attorney General would take in the state, when I put that after the legacy in California?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, smashing grabs, I mean, we only have smashing grabs, I mean, we have burglaries into businesses, we've seen a little bit of that lately, and, I mean, Charity Clark is actually coming down this week to meet with us in Bennington, and... And she's the attorney general. And so she's coming down to meet with us, as well as Senator Sears, on some laws that have gone into effect. And, you know, we're, it's something I can certainly ask her.
I'd just say to see what happened in a while, just personally, Clark.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Clark?
My thing, you know, you mentioned in terms of community, which is basically what we, which is all about is integrated with the community. One of our aspirations is, you know, we've seen that from Monday, that I noticed that policemen there have high visibility clothing, you know, and the mobs, you can look around and recognize, there's a police officer right there. And, you know, we had our events here on the street, all of your presence in there. Somebody looking down, "Man, you're awesome." So stand out. And, you know, I would think the idea of whether they're going to do a thing like that, maybe reversible, that something breaks, coming in and out, and you'll never see, there's an officer at hand, or there are, you know, who you're speaking of, and see, I don't think I ever do that, there's cops around here. And coupled with it, one thing I just talked about in the UK was, their vehicles are brightly colored, they're yellow, and they reach out, "Oh, your vehicles." You have to, like, take, I touched and looked for them, and I said, as soon as I, in presence of a high visibility vehicle, a high visibility police officer or vehicle in the area, people remember this, but you may not have been there, and however they think, but in my mind, it's a classic police crime there, all the time, versus a dark, dark vehicle riding down the street, and I come, it's a weird, "Chief, here's a police presence." And, you know, presence of a high visibility vehicle or vehicles, I think you would put off a few people in terms of their marital behavior, reassure the good people, and the chief's guys are, they're obvious, they're around, so, you know, you're going to read away from getting a vehicle, or whatever, something you want to consider, positive benefit having brightly colored vehicles, realizing they're on the track, you know, they won't be seeing them like that, in general.
Well, no, I mean, that's not entirely true. I mean, you know, that's why we call it high visibility traffic enforcement, right? So, you know, as far as making our cars high vis, I mean, we could probably change some decals or make them so that they stand out. That's, you know, that's how they do things in the UK. You know, unfortunately, in the United States, it's a little bit different. But, I mean, I did take some notes. As far as the high vis clothing goes, you know, we've worked a lot of great summer events so far this season, and, you know, you're kind of, I agree with you, and I have to be careful. I do believe that the police should stand out just for that purpose, but we also have to be careful, because some of these events, you know, they want the police standing back, not inward the crowd and things like that. So, you know, it's, and I'm not, this is not a pity party, it's like, we're damned if we do, and we're damned if we don't. And I, but I completely understand what you're saying, and we do have high vis traffic vests for when we're at traffic crash scenes, so that the officers are safe, right? But we have been utilizing more, and hopefully, some of you have seen this, we have on our new cars, on our light bars, we have something called cruise lighting, and, not mood lighting, cruise lighting. And instead of the lights flashing, you actually can put them on steady burn, and you can tone down the power so that they're not bright. We've tried it, and what happens is, is you drive, like, through the village of North Bennington, as an example, because we want the residents to know that we are there, and you put those cruise lights on, and what happens is, is people see you coming, and they pull over. You know, it's, that's not, that's not the point of the cruise lights, right? So it's so that people, so that you stand out. So we have, we have attempted some of that, and perhaps we need to do it a little bit more. It's something that the lieutenant and I can talk about with our staff.
In terms of the uniforms, there's kind of dark gray with the light, passing, so forth. Again, that, that is almost like the appropriate of bad guys, you know, really, the bad guys are interested in our colors. The idea of considering even changing your uniform color, I think, will save your uniforms.
So the uniforms are part of the working agreement. It takes the chief and members of the working agreement to sit down and talk about that, and we have to agree. And lieutenant will back me up. I'm smiling because I just met with my staff yesterday, our staff yesterday, prior to the Bennington Battle Day Parade, and we had this conversation so that we can start a uniform committee, so we can take a look at where we're at. The gray uniforms were COVID-related, so that we could wash and wear, and they're far less money than the uniforms that we were wearing. So those are things that we have to take into consideration. I appreciate your point. It's almost like we talked before, but we didn't. But I did tell my staff that we need to put a committee together to take a look at uniforms. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Anyone from the Select Board have a question? No? Go ahead.
I'll try to be brief. It's hard for me to be brief, but I'll try. Is it possible for you to talk for just a minute or two about the new experience camp? I know it's really important to you, and I have a good sense of what's included in the camp experience, but I don't know if the rest of the community does. So I think it's, it would be really great for people to hear about that.
Yes. You know, I skipped over it just because we had so many other things. The new experience camp has something that has been happening for over 20 years with members of the Bennington Police Department. The officers volunteer their time. We take a group of kids, we've had as many as 40 kids, span of control, a little unmanageable there. This year, we had 20, 29 kids. We try to keep it between 25 and 30 to make it manageable. We take these kids, we give them all sorts of experiences that they've not had. We partner with Southwest Tech. We spend an entire day. This year, for example, kids were involved in building trades. They, some kids got to drive a backhoe, some kids got to drive a bulldozer. We teach them firearm safety, we take them to the range, we teach them to shoot safely. And there's so many different things that we do. We work with the hospital to teach the kids first aid, CPR, and AED use. The Bennington Fire Department comes in, they learn how to cut cars apart, wear fire turnout gear, they learn how to use fire extinguishers with real fire. You know, there's just so many things that happen. We end the week with whitewater rafting, because it's a thrill, it's an experience, and it's teamwork. It's not about getting in the raft and just floating down the river. They have to paddle together, they have to work together, they have to work as a team. So they come into this camp, with many of them not knowing one another, by the end of the week, they know each other, and they're sad that it's time to go home. And we'll just briefly share with you that we add new things. This year, we took our communications director, Jonah, he taught the kids how to go caving, which was a real hoot. You know, it was a little disappointing, there weren't any bats, but, you know, it was, it was the real deal. And we took the kids over to Somerset Reservoir, we taught them kayaking, canoeing, we taught them how to fish, and it's just, it's an amazing time. And yes, very time consuming, yes, my staff is tired by the end of the week, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, we feel like we're making a difference. There's a lot of parents inquiring of us to see if we can raise the age, and see if we can take 16-year-olds next year, and perhaps put them, there are kids that participate in the camp that want to know more about law enforcement, and so we're thinking about maybe taking a group next year and having them do some law enforcement-related things, and then, you know, a lot of fun things as well. You know, and it's almost like, you know, we get them started at a young age, and we get them interested in law enforcement. Southwest Tech has an amazing program for law enforcement, so if they can come out of our camp, go over to Southwest Tech, be part of that, go off to school, go off to the military, come back in four years, or what have you, and join the Bennington Police Department, or get involved in law enforcement, it could make a huge difference, whether it's with Bennington Rescue, or the Police Department, or the Fire Department, and keep some of our local kids local.
Maybe you should have an adult new experience camp, because I would sign up. There's a lot of things that you just rattled off that I've never done. This is just a little reminder. You do a swearing-in ceremony whenever you hire a new police officer. Is that right?
We do.
Is that...
Yes.
I think we had, we're wondering if we could be invited to go to those swearing-in ceremonies, the Select Board? So if you think that's possible, we would love to know when you're doing that. I know it's months away, but...
So I think, I think what's even better than that, but I'll do what you asked me to do, as I always do, I think it would be fantastic if, after these recruits graduate, if we could get together with the Select Board, bring them into a meeting like this, and introduce them to everyone.
Oh, that's great.
That would be even better.
Yeah.
Because then the community gets to see who's on board, and could put a face with a name. The banner's been great about, you know, writing a little release when our people graduate and from the Academy, but we can take it a step further, I think. I'll talk to Mr. Hurd and see if that's possible. Sometimes these swearing-in ceremonies are fantastic, because we get to meet the family of the people, and we encourage that. You know, Stu comes in with Michelle Johnson, we have many of our people attend the swearing-in ceremony, because they are joining a family, and they bring their family as well. But I think it would be fantastic if we could bring them here and introduce them, and then everyone can say, "Great, you made it through the Academy. Buckle down."
And thank you. Tell them thank you.
Right.
Cam, has all the new technology been well received? Because I'm technology terrified. That's my category, so I'm assuming everyone is just over the moon excited.
So as we progress through this budget and getting through some of our stuff delivered, this is all I ever, this is all I get knocking on my door. ALT, when are we gonna, when are those MBTs gonna come out? When are the new body cameras? ALT, these new body cameras are just amazing. Thank you very much. You know, it's just, they're really, really happy with, you know, some of the stuff that we have identified and what Nick Cave has, you know, we thought we were on track, we thought we had, we knew what we were doing, because we kind of did it before, but with our new computers, our new MBTs, our new body cameras, new cruiser cameras, the Smart Board, you know, getting them all into place, you know, working with, you know, our vendors, we thought we knew what we were doing, but Nick just brought it to the next level and made it so much easier than, you know, than, you know, than I thought it was going to be, and he's been, he's just amazing. So, and he's done, you know, the officers, when he's in the building, the officers are just, "Hey, Nick, what else can you do? What else can you do?" And he's just really, really supportive of our department and the members.
That's great. One last thing. I thought I was sensing that crime had decreased, but I wasn't really sure if that was accurate, and it was just really wonderful to hear that what I was feeling is real, and that it is, it has declined, so I just, really grateful.
So we have, again, we have seen a decline, as I mentioned, as far as violent crime goes, still, still, you know, on track for 13,000 to 14,000 calls for service this year. We're doing a lot with a little, but we are definitely making a difference with our partners, our federal partners, our state partners, and, you know, we're going to continue to strive to do the best that we can to keep the community safe.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of comments, if I could. First one is a question related to the crisis counselor that will be assigned to the department for 24 hours a week. Does that change your access to 24/7 through UCS? Or you still have that?
It does not. This is an addition.
That's important to mention.
Yes.
Yeah, good. So no reduction in...
The crisis worker is in addition to the services that we already have access to.
That's excellent.
But again, the difference will be, right on my right shoulder would be, you know, a crisis worker responding to complaints, and then on my left shoulder, having that crisis worker available. If we had a critical incident, one, for the family members that are involved, and two, for the staff to debrief after the fact.
Makes good sense. Good, good. The next comment or question is related to your meeting with the Attorney General. Just a thought, something for you guys to think about, if appropriate, should a, or could a member of CPAR be invited to that meeting, if it's that kind of meeting? So you don't have to answer that, but I just would ask you to think about that.
Yeah, you know, Senator Sears asked me about setting this, or he set it up, and he inquired about this. I think at this point, it's more or less for us to have a clear understanding of each other. The Bennington Police Department was instrumental in some of the legislation that went to our legislators this year, and I think at this point, Ms. Clark just wants to have a clear understanding of everything that happened in Bennington last year, and what we're doing to try to improve safety here. You know, Ms. Carol and I, we meet monthly prior to CPAR meetings, Community Policing Advisory Review Board meetings, and we set agendas, we come up with different things. And there's also some training that's going to be happening with the state's attorney's office here in this building, but it's restricted to law enforcement. And there's reasons for that, because we talk about specific cases, there are names and things like that, that certainly the community should not be, you know, involved with. I mean, this is not a secret meeting. If it was, I wouldn't have told you about it, but I just need the community to know that we are taking appropriate steps to keep the community safe. And by her coming to visit, I think it's going to, we're going to have an understanding on both sides.
Do we note it? Thank you. My last comment is regarding the new experience camp. As you know, my son went through, spent at least three summers with you, and we lost him this year at 15 to a paying job that he was well-prepared for because of the time that he spent with you guys. So he was a camp counselor, as you know, in Andover this summer. The things that you just described were the foundation for him to be able to take that job at age 15. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? Anyone else in the community have a question?
I think police force in Bennington in the region, I really do, I'm a supporter of some of the stuff that we've been able to do for the last few years, people, it's hopefully, I've been so. I don't see it, but I don't want to talk to other people, I don't see it. But then you go, if you want to make a job, as far as visibility, you can get more honest and lovely as you can. I don't think you have a...
Wow. Yikes.
I don't know, should we don't play out?
I was going to say, are you still driving? You know? So just lastly, before I leave, Ms. Jenkins, August 31st is Overdose Awareness Day, and certainly, there are people in our community and all over this country that are struggling with opiates and drug addiction, and I would just ask that we keep some of those people in our thoughts and prayers, and we strive to help them like we do others with dependency situations. So again, the 31st of August, think about those people. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, next up is Riverwalk. Stu, I'm going to turn it over to you for the tree report.
Yes, thank you. As you know, questions have been raised about tree removal, especially in this project that will be upgrading the Riverwalk as it runs from Park Street across school to north, and then an additional section will be added, tying it in across the parking lot to the new walkway pathway that heads down northerly along their old railroad rightway. So this is a project which is being undertaken with state and federal dollars, as well as local dollars, and that creates some issues for us. And there are two sections that tree removal is going to be necessary. The first is between school and Park Street. This was the most recent section constructed. The trees that were planted are a form of cherry tree that I'm told by the county forester have neared the end of their normal life. They were planted relatively close together, so when you walk down that walkway, and I visited the walkway with Ron Pembroke, who is a horticulturist with Pembroke Landscaping, you can see that the canopy is actually fairly bare, where the trees are competing and overcompeting with one another for the light. And what makes this a necessary... And what makes this necessary is we need to add lighting to that section of the walk. And that was one of the primary reasons that we decided to take a look at this. Thanks in part to the Saturday walks along the Riverwalk way, lighting was identified in that particular stretch because there isn't any. So we plan to remove every other cherry tree. Well, it'll end up being, I think, three trees in total will be removed. One, Ron believes this will make the remaining trees healthier. We did not want to cross the walk and get onto the riverside of the walkway because that might lead to bank erosion or other problems during times of high flows. But there is at least one maple on the other side that needs to be trimmed up. The canopy is very, very low. It is hanging, in fact, on the walkway in one place. So we'll remove three trees there. That is the proposal. And then we'll bring the canopy up, lifting it up, and add lighting to that section. The other section where major work will be done is this section between North Street and School Street. And if you will, and I have some pictures attached here that were part of this. As you enter the Riverwalk from North Street, it's only three feet wide. It is very close to the edge of the river, and trees that were planted there back, and this was the first segment of the walkway that was built. Trees that were planted there are Norway maples. They're crimson maples, but it's a Norway variety. They have become very large. And in fact, in order to bring that walkway into compliance with the minimum standards for federal and state conditions, we need to remove at least four trees. Three are alive, the first three. The fourth tree is already dead, and that is not gonna be a problem. That will allow us to widen the walkway in that location. The walkway will be widened all the way down through there, but this is the only location where trees create a problem for us because we are too close to the river and they are too close to the walkway. So that, that will be done, and that is allowed under state law because we must be in compliance with state and federal dollars and their various compliance issues in order to do this walkway in the correct and appropriate standard that is today's standards. And so I'm looking partly to inform the board, partly to inform the community. There may be some questions out there. Mr. Bethel was the one that raised the questions firstly. I've sent him a copy of my report, so he understands what I've said tonight. He may have other questions having to do with it, but that's my report. We hope to begin this project relatively soon, and so it's important that we get this essentially behind us so that we can move forward.
So any questions or comments from the board? If I'm remembering correctly, Kelly, is Kelly still here? It seems to me that safety was really driving this project, specifically for lighting and the width of the trail. So more than one per, you can pass each other if there happens to be someone riding a bicycle. The person, the pedestrian could end up getting hit by the bicycle. So am I right in that characterization?
That's true. I mean, if we were to do nothing, if we were to do nothing with the walkway, we wouldn't have to touch it. But the fact of the matter is, the Select Board, through advocacy from the community, wanted lighting. They wanted the walkway improved because it is, in a sense, closed in and dark in some places. And so we are acting on behest of the board and the community to follow through on that. The walkway has been designed. We have received grant monies that we're waiting to utilize to do this. But the issue of tree removal is one that state law deals with, and as your tree warden, one of my many duties, I am recommending that we follow through as I have outlined in this report.
So Stuart, if we, if we want to have a bike pad path, then it has to be widened? Yes?
Yes.
Like for state and federal?
Yeah, well, it has to be widened in order to comply with federal and state dollars. If we were not gonna be using federal and state dollars, we could probably ignore the standards. But we are relying on those dollars in order to do the entire project.
And then it would be, it's a safety concern. Yes, a safety concern. Right. All right. Other questions, comments?
How wide is that?
At North Street, it's three feet. It widens out to, I believe, it's five feet in some places, perhaps as wide as seven feet in the School Street to Park Street portion because that was the most recent one completed. But nowhere do I believe it is a minimum of eight feet.
Try to get it to at least seven feet throughout the whole corridor, which is just barely acceptable. Really, eight feet is recommended is a bare minimum, but in some places we just can't do it. And then, but actually, they prefer to have to which all, I don't know, the public to have, we're gonna do the best we can to hold that right.
How wide is the rail trail? That's a nice...
That's a good lift for that level.
Is there, is there no way to keep those trees that are near North Street?
There is no way. You can't, there is insufficient, and as the pictures indicate, as you face the walkway from North Street, the trees are right adjacent to it, the first three, and then it drops off to the river. State of Vermont has told us, no, you can't expand towards the river. We don't want you to do that with the walkway because it would require fill. It would require encroaching on the floodway, flood hazard area there. So we're confined to a relatively small space, and the only place we can expand is to the south, which is where the trees are.
So the last question is, will there be new trees planted in that area?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Yes.
Any other board questions?
Would it be able to, would we be able to use, say, our federal funds to do the Riverwalk and School Street area while removing the, every other tree as you proposed?
Yes, that's part of the project cost.
I'm sorry, without, without removing the maples, the Norway?
We would not be able to improve the pathway to federal and state standards.
So we couldn't separate the projects?
No. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be advisable. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have achieved the goal of making the entire pathway federally and state compliant.
So we couldn't do separate?
No. The grant we received was to upgrade the entire pathway. So we made that, we made that commitment.
It would also make no sense to improve part of the, because then what we would do is you just create a model that could create more like the state issues by having compliance agenda.
Yes, I guess from my perspective, those trees are gorgeous. I mean, they're not, from what I see...
What trees are you talking about?
The crimson maple.
Which one?
The crimson maples, that Norway maples. It's, I thought it was invasive because it's Norway. That variety's not invasive because it doesn't have the invasive qualities. So I was incorrect when I stated that at last meeting when we talked about this. So I think they're gorgeous, and I would hate to remove those. So I wonder if it would be possible to keep those and then do as a separate project while removing those other trees on the Riverwalk and School Street.
Well, from our perspective, we've applied for the grant monies to improve the entire walkway, so you would be placing the entire grant in jeopardy if you tried to do it section by section.
You don't think it'd place the people in jeopardy? It's not, it's not safe having that narrow road for pedestrians.
Yeah, I, I guess I also see that as a slowing feature right there, too.
So can you say that? Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, open a line, okay. Yeah, I also see that right there as a slowing feature at the, let me see, the River and North Street entrance. So, yeah, I may be incorrect, but I see that as a slowing feature when it's not that wide open. So that's, that's what I see. Could be incorrect, but...
All right. Any other questions from, comments from the board? And then I think we have quite a few comments from the public. All right.
Can I ask you?
I think Sam has his hand up, so he gets to go.
Sam Mercino, Bennington, Vermont. And speaking of lighting, do you know what the lumen levels are? What are you gonna be doing, lighting it up like it's on Main Street, or you're gonna do floodlights, or, and if you're talking about Walumseck apartments, are they aware of the light pollution possibly?
They're, they're already lighting, is already along the Walumseck portion of the trail. We're gonna be upgrading the fixtures so that they're more downlit, so that they'll be lighting the pathway, not so much the air, the eye, the air around them.
So you're gonna be more mood light letting and downlighting as well?
Yes.
Lights going up into the vegetation or?
Well, right now, right now, you're familiar with the fixtures.
Yes.
They're historic fixture, but they, they have a, an open vision. These lights will be downlit.
Right.
They'll be more like the lights that you would see along other parts of the walkway or in parking lots where they're, you're trying not to light the surround as much as you're trying to light the safety.
And if we're starting this, I think we should look at other areas in town that need light improvement as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you wanna come up? Where'd you go?
I see.
You asked to move the microphone.
I think you can. Can you hear me over there in the microphone? I wish you people would just cancel this right out. You don't need to go after every federal grant. That walkway from School Street to North or North to School Street is beautiful. It's been there since the 80s. Money was donated. It is gorgeous, and I see people at the, what is that called? Parks there. They love it that way. I see people walking their dogs there, a couple of people, people with canes. And I don't know if you people have noticed anything, but these people riding bikes aren't riding bikes anymore. They're riding these electric bikes. They can go 19 miles an hour, okay? And you're not gonna be able to stop that. And $40,000 of our own money, you don't need to ruin that pathway. It is very beautiful. I don't think it's a letter of, but I just think it's a total waste of money. As far as security goes, just pull them down, put rider lights there, put cameras on if you want to, like the police chief was saying, maybe bring them up somehow. But it's lasted for 80 years. I'm sorry, there was a tragedy there, but that tragedy could happen anywhere in Bennington. And many tragedies have happened in Bennington over the last several years due to drugs and whatever. But to ruin that path, it's just poetic. I think it's the essence of what Bennington's about. And if you do this, you're gonna make us look like every other New York community or Boston or anything else. And Jimmy Carroll didn't even know. I gave him the pen, he's probably got it in front of him now, what it was gonna look like, how wide and straight that's gonna be. This is ridiculous to ruin that path. And it's gonna be on all seven of you. It ain't gonna be me that's gonna hold this. It's the seven of you taking that beautiful path, especially the one from North up to School Street. You should leave it alone and tell the feds, "Thanks, but we don't need it." The other one, by Benell, that may need some improvement, you know, by the school. But this one here, from schools to North and North, it's crazy to do it. And I wish some of you would come to your senses and say, "No, we're not gonna postpone it." You can always get another grant. You can always postpone. Security doesn't know this. If you put this up to a vote and hadn't looked at it, they wouldn't vote for this. This is you on your head, it's not mine. Leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead. Martha? Yep.
Am I able to ask a question about what is...
Introduce yourself first.
Oh, sorry. I'm Martha Mackey. I live in Bennington. Just wondering, can I ask a quick question about the changes? Is there, School Street along Benell, is that going to be also repaved? Okay. And just a comment regarding...
And widen, and widen.
And widen.
Because it is not smooth there.
Yeah, exactly. That's what, and just regarding the section north and, between north and school, not a comment on whether it should be widened, but as somebody who does bike and has biked frequently up and down that, I generally avoid it because it is too narrow. And so I know you said as a slowing measure, but it's not, slowing isn't really an option. You really can't, you're coming up on pedestrian teals at every moment, and it's either bike or don't bike. Like, it's not really an option. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
The Riverwalk weight from Park Street to Depot Street exists because the town of Bennington taxpayers paid to put it in, and our officials had to do a lot of talking and convincing 35 or 40 years ago to talk the people into voting for us to pay for it. And Bennington residents had a say and understood any detail before it went forward. And if there was any grant money involved, those dollars were few and far between. And I am shocked by how little those of us in Bennington know what those plans are. And I was even more shocked when Mike picked up the drawing from the town office, and I believe it's dated 2021. I don't know why somebody wasn't in here early last year to put those plans up there to hear public reaction. In February, I read in the banner that an official was gonna be at the Riverwalk, so I went. And I'd be surprised if it was 30 degrees, and I was pretty surprised to hear about some of those plans. I asked how many cameras we, were gonna be put on the trail. To me, you had a young woman lose her life in broad daylight, common sense would tell me you'd have those cameras to help prevent something like that from happening, or if something happened in the future, the police department could pull those tapes up and look, or to prevent vandalism. We've had a lot of vandalism on that trail. I don't, again, I don't understand how you wanna spend close to a quarter of a million dollars, and the public has never had a say or even seen the plans.
Right now, we're having, right now is your time to speak specifically to the plans. We're talking about the trees, we're talking about widening the path.
Okay.
And we are talking about additional lighting between school and park. So this, right now, is your opportunity, and it was in the public packet, so you can absolutely look the circle, I mean, there's circles and arrows showing which trees, et cetera.
Madam Chair, we should be clear. This, this plan was reviewed at a Select Board meeting when we made an application for the grant money.
As well, yes.
Yes, the public has seen this before.
That's true. If they chose to look.
Stu, the plans that Mike has, that he got at the town office, all those drawings were put up at a meeting for the public to see?
There was a presentation made by the folks in our Community Development Department. I believe this slide was part of those presentations. I don't, I don't remember back that far.
Well, I remember hearing about safety and lighting, and I don't have a problem with the lighting. I've seen the new light down at the Riverwalk Way Park, and I think that's great. But in February, Mike talked about something being placed in the road on School Street to make it easier to get in and out of the road. And I said, "If you're gonna do that, we need to have a public conversation." But I don't understand why we need to widen this for the bicycles. That was never the intention of the bike, of the walkway.
Nancy, you have 30 seconds.
Well, again, I, how do you explain that a member of the Select Board for 10 years didn't even know about this when Bethel showed him the path?
Personal comments are, you are absolutely not allowed to do that.
Well, again...
Absolutely not.
We're, the people are in the dark, and you've got somebody on the Select Board that was kept in the dark.
Ned, you're up next.
I'm just looking at the Vermont Tree Warden statutes. Do we have a shade tree preservation plan?
No.
We don't have one. But it says the tree warden may develop one, so that may, that may be something you wanna look at. And is this, if you're gonna take down trees, we have to have an official hearing? Is that what this is? Is this an official duly-warranted hearing to take down the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My only other comment is sharing bikes and pedestrians on a path. I've had some bad encounters up in Burlington and down on Cape Cod, walking on bike paths where I've almost got killed, which, you know, just makes me nervous.
Hi, my name is Kelly Carroll. I live in Bennington, and my daughter Emily Hammond was murdered on the Riverwalk. The tragic event that could have happened anywhere in town did happen on the Riverwalk. And that was back in 2021. And since then, we have advocated for more public safety improvements on the entire walkway, and we are very appreciative of the community's support and the... And we are very appreciative of the community's support and the business support that have resulted in additional cameras, additional lighting, updated benches, community support for cleaning up the area and using the area in a, in a positive way. We thank the BBC and Sharon for their work on that transportation grant and the commitment that the town needed to make to secure the almost quarter million in funding. And that was discussed in several select board meetings because I came to them. And I'm very, very appreciative that the select board made the commitment to put funding for the lighting in the budget that was passed by the taxpayers, and BBC was able to take that funding and use that money as the basis for the commitment for that transportation grant. So, you know, I'm just going to say, I love the natural beauty of the River Walk, and I especially love that canopy of trees in the Benell section. And I don't think anyone really wants trees cut down, but that being said, I think the plan is a good compromise between the love of the trees and the need for public safety. But if you can't find a compromise, and this is going to get delayed, these unfortunate traumatic incidents can happen anywhere in town. So if you're not going to find a compromise, and it's going to be put on hold for another year, then I think the town should close that section of the walkway at dusk. I think you should consider signage at both entrances of the section, and that signage needs to warn people to enter that section at their own risk. I also think that if the town has not already done so, you should complete a risk analysis on the taxpayers' liability for the danger in that section on the walkway. I'm not going to get into the trees in the, the section in North Street to School Street. I have very strong opinions on that, you know, the, the width of the, the pathway, the concern for the residents coming out. I did talk with Dan, we talked, he talked about signage, you know, to, to, to warn people. But the lighting is just something that, yeah, maybe it's been 1980s since the path was done, but times are different. And you need to be able to see when you're walking down that lighting. And if it happens to be that it's dark and you can't tell, not really that somebody's going to come out of the, those trees for you, but what about something that's maybe inadvertently left in there? Maybe there's a little water bottle or something that somebody comes through and falls and trips on. I really think that we're lucky that somebody hasn't gotten hurt more on that. So I hope that, you know, you do make a compromise, and if not, duly warn the public of the risk so that the taxpayers aren't on the hook for more money. And I do appreciate the fact that this is a quarter of a million dollars, that is a transportation grant, and I know that there's restrictions on it. And I encourage you very, very strongly to either get lighting in that section or close it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. This, not rebut it, but if you have a comment to make, you're welcome to make one.
I think the compromise would be, if everybody's afraid of safety, is not only close, wrap that at dusk, but any other public walkway at dusk, if we're all going to be afraid somebody's going to get hurt. I knew her daughter, I know her other daughter, they're great people.
Please don't get into personal things.
Well, I'm just saying.
Stop.
All right. I am just saying, the pathway is a beautiful pathway for everybody in Bennington. Everybody. I enjoy it during the day, I don't know, at night, I'd go down there, it's not what I go out at night anymore, because all of Bennington is unsafe.
Want to remind us that we are looking at this proposal? So you're starting to stray. I'm just, I'm just warning you, you're starting to stray.
I'm saying, you know, other people can stray, but not, you know, me. I want the pathway to stay the same. If it needs to be cleaned up a bit, fine. You want more lighting with cameras? All for it. Take out $40,000 and put more into it. But this was, this is not, you didn't hold a public hearing the right way, because nobody can see on those cameras that when you put anything on, anything on, from that cat TV, when you show the screen. Nobody knew, yeah, nobody knows. You can't see that.
They're actually in the packet for this week. The pictures are in the packet.
I'm talking about the public.
Available to the public, Mike. I'm looking right at it.
Available to the public, online or at the public library.
When you say you're having a hearing and you say it was on screen, you can't tell what's on the screen from that camera when you watch it on TV. You can't, you can't see it. You don't know what it is.
Mike.
Well, anyway, I hope you slow this down, make some improvements, but don't take down a lot of trees, and do not make that a bike path.
All right, other, thank you. Other questions, comments? Anyone? Yes, Clark.
I remain Clark Adams of Bennington. Safety is very important, but the common thing, and I've seen this myself, these new e-bikes that are out here on our streets, you know, I know a lot of signs saying no motorized vehicles on this path or trail in various places I've been. And I, the speed those travel, and someone either got his headphones on, isn't paying attention, or paying attention to their child, somebody blasting down one of these narrow trails on one of those e-bikes, I think is a major threat to public safety and maybe someone.
Clark is straying, you're straying.
No, what I'm saying in terms of narrowing, widening or narrowing this path to accommodate bikes or everything, if we're going to do that, I think you have to seriously look at restricting e-bikes or powered vehicles on these pathways. You know, that's, that's, that's my main angst hearing what's going on here is, this young lady even mentioned, I assume she's on a pedal bike, moving up and down that trail, has some hazardous areas, and we should address that. Is it safe to have the general public on this pathway and these motorized or powered bikes on these pathways?
Thank you. So, we, yeah. So you're suggesting restricted motorized vehicles with the exception of, of, with the exception of wheelchairs?
Yeah. I'm hearing right of potential injury, right, having a rear tire.
Yeah. Anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Nancy, you're up.
I just would like to add that when I took part in the River Walkway in February to learn what was going to be done, and I looked at the map Mike got since then, what I'm looking at on the map doesn't match everything we were told, so I don't even know which to go by.
Nancy, what you, what Mike McDonough shared was the BBC's conceptual plan, and he actually did two presentations to River Walk plus, you know, any community that, that wanted to hear that. But that was, that was the design committee's conceptual plan. So this is the plan that's being proposed right now. So you don't need to be confused.
But is, is the plan that Mike has, is that what's going to?
I don't know what Mike has.
Well, he got it from the town office.
I have no idea what Mike has.
Okay.
To you, Jimmy Carroll, Carrie Andrew.
Well, if this is what's in the packet, which is what I just said to Nancy, is the official, is, is what we're discussing.
I'm, I'm looking at the diagram, and I'm looking at things on there that, that weren't talked about. And I hope the public remembers that, I don't know if it was several years ago or longer, we had an issue with people taking cars on the River Walkway. Now, if you're going to widen that path, and, and the issue I have is with the people with these electric bikes. Most people on bikes are wonderful, but what are you going to tell pedestrians and people with little kids and seniors when somebody comes whipping down that bike path? I mean, who has the right of way? So I just wish you would get the actual drawing for what's being proposed up here, so the public could have a clue, because it's about a lot more than trees.
Nancy, it's in the packet, and it's available at the public library. I'm sorry. And it's also online. So it is available to the public.
So for people who can't get on?
Any other comment?
For people who can't get online and seniors who don't not know how to use a computer.
And they can't go to the library and?
So they're out in the dark, but they pay their property taxes.
I could just make a comment.
Please.
This is the result of the studies that were done and the work that, this is the, what has been determined is necessary to make the improvements. So we made the booking at design reviews in, in previous presentations. This is the final plan that was made public, and is what is at discussion tonight. It's simple.
It is. And so I would look for, if there are no more questions, I would look for a motion to accept the proposal as presented and maybe, and explore restricting motorized vehicles or signage.
Or adding signage or something like that. And I'm sure signage is part of the proposal anyway.
Yeah, so explore other pieces. But, yeah, I would, I would look for a motion to accept the proposal.
I will move, make that motion.
I'd like to second. You can. So I'd like to second.
Wait, you did it? Gary? Okay. All right. Any other, any other questions, comments?
Yes, I think at this point, I'm not able to make that motion due to the people that have contacted me. Well, you just asked for more comments.
Yeah, so you're not able to support the motion.
Right, I'm not able to support that motion because of people that have made comments and a lot of questions have come in, so I'm not able to support that motion at this time.
All right.
Yep.
Jeanne, can I just ask that the motion be restated with the two additions that you two talked about? The, the motion was made to?
Accept the proposal as presented and to explore restricting motorized vehicles with the exception of wheelchairs, and also to explore signage.
Thank you, I wanted that clear. Thank you.
We're all over chairs.
I said with, they're accepted.
Say, Paul, we're just, for example.
Well, we're not, we're just, we're exploring. So in the exploration, we'll get the, the language correctly. Okay, so that's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. All right. And now Shannon, the marketing report.
All right. I'm going to see if I can, is it possible for me to move this back? Just because sitting in the audience, I'm realizing that the audience is right in the way of the screen, so I'm going to see if I can move it back a little bit here, just so that you guys can see a little bit better. Is that better?
Yeah, just make sure no one falls.
Oh. Okay. Pull that a little, thanks, Jac. Okay, great. Just so you can see. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Barcetti. I'm the Community Development Director for the Town of Bennington. And I'm just, the select board asked me to, to give an update on the town's marketing campaign. So that's what I'm here tonight to do. Just VermontBeginsHere.com is the website for the town's marketing campaign. If you haven't seen it already, you should go and visit if you want to go to the next site. So this is just, I don't have lots of pretty pictures, but this is one of the landing pages for the site. It has a really wonderful directory of all things Bennington, things to do, including when you, each of these, across the top, when you go to them, they drop down. So things to do include cultural activities, events, shopping, outdoor recreation, et cetera, directory of restaurants, hotels, wedding venues, which is a popular, you know, thing that people are looking for in Vermont. A site, one of the tabs is move to Vermont, resources, kind of local necessities that you might need, and then a site for different blog posts about some of the, some of the attractions to Bennington, if you want to go to the next one. So the town's marketing campaign was launched in September of 2019. The town already had the domain name of Vermont Begins Here because we received a grant a few years before that through the USCA that was more focused on economic development, and a group of local business owners actually approached the select board. I think in 2018, 2019, it was right before I started in this position, and they wanted to revive Vermont Begins Here, but to switch the focus to really be more on destination marketing and drawing tourists, in part because we, we have the Chamber, which had really gone from being the Bennington Chamber to the Southwestern Vermont Chamber of Commerce to look at, really working across all of Bennington County. And then we have the Better Bennington Corporation focused on downtown, but we didn't have a townwide Bennington marketing focus. So that is why this was launched. As I said, it's focused townwide. It's really focused on why people are coming to Bennington. So the, the, the target market, we're really, it's great for locals to know about this directory and share it, but it's really for tourists outside of Bennington. So it's very targeted through digital marketing to folks that can drive to Bennington, you know, so particularly the market of Boston and New York City and kind of the 40-mile radius around those cities. And that's how this marketing campaign is organized. So the things that are drawing people to Bennington, a lot of that focus is Bennington's history and, you know, historical sites, arts and culture, and outdoor recreation. So it's a destination marketing campaign that includes the website directory, an email newsletter that you can sign up for, and then social media, as well as a digital ad campaign. If you want to go to the next one? So the, when the, the marketing campaign began, we had, we started with, with a $50,000 annual budget approved by the select board and the voters. And over the last year or two, that's been decreased to $40,000, so that an initial budget was used to create the, the website. We hired 802 Marketing, which is a local, founded in Bennington, marketing firm that created that website. They also maintain it, and then they also organize and manage the digital marketing campaign. So just to give you a snapshot of how those dollars are spent in this past fiscal year that just ended June 30th, the vast majority of those funds, over $25,000, is used on digital ads for Google and Facebook. So for example, Google Ads, if you go onto Google and you do a search and you see if at the top of your search, something that says sponsored, that's a Google ad. So you're essentially paying per click. So what this campaign is trying to do is when you look up things to do in Bennington, you know, these are kind of at the top of that list because we're paying for that space. So that's really how most of these funds are used, and we can really target that through these digital ads to that market that I just described, which is the, the kind of New York metropolitan area and the Boston area. And we can also do that very, in a targeted way with Facebook ads. So that's how most of the funds are used. We also have website management to keep the website current and updated, social media management, we have a Facebook and Instagram account, and creative content for those blog posts, like I mentioned, also photography. We have done a small amount of print ads through Vermont Country Magazine, which is through, owned through the affiliate of the Bennington Banner and covers kind of the southern Vermont and Berkshires area. So we have a couple of ads that we've done in Vermont Country Magazine, and then also the, the Chambers Shire's Guide. And that ad is really pushing people to go to this Vermont Begins Here directory. And then some other expenses for just the website maintenance, you know, domain names, MailChimp is our email newsletter. Also during the past fiscal year, just a snapshot of how people are using the site, there's really continued traffic and engagement, so there are 81,448 visits, 51, almost 52,000 of those are people clicking on those paid ads that I mentioned. Another, over 18,000 are organic searches. So that means what's happening over time is that people are finding the site through their own searching and not through the paid ads. And that's what we want to happen. You know, the goal is that we can bring down that ad spending because more people are going to know about this site. There are about, people are looking at 1.65 pages, so they're, they're looking around, the average time that they're spending on the site is 1 minute and 18 seconds. And this last one, the conversion rate, what, the, the purpose of this site is that it's a directory that's then, what you want people to do is go to the site, but then look at the other things that are listed. So you want, you want this conversion, and according to 802 Market, Marketing, over 15% is actually really good for the conversion rate, because what that means is that that many people are going to then the other many people are going to then the other sites. So they're going to Madison's, you know, brewery, and they're looking at some of our local restaurants, or the Bennington Museum, et cetera, and that's what we want to be happening. We want them, to drive them to our other businesses and, and attractions. So some of our other marketing channels, we have the email newsletter, over 2,500 people are subscribed to the monthly newsletter, and it has a really great 44% open rate. I don't know how many of you get email newsletters, but I know that I rarely open the ones that I do get, so the fact that it's being opened that much is, is good. We have 3,300 Instagram followers, 2,300 Facebook followers, and then we have the print ads in the Shire's Guide and Vermont Country Magazine, as well as the rack cards that the Chamber distributes through their Shire's campaign at various sites in Bennington County. So the top Vermont Begins Here landing pages on the website, Bennington Restaurants is number one, things to do, recreation, fall foliage, things to do, shopping, Vermont Fall Foliage Drives, Discover Old Bennington Walking Tour, and the Covered Bridges of Bennington. The website receives 1,400 searches per month and ranks for 25,000 keywords.
Shannon, were those, I'm sorry to interrupt, were those in order? Were those top?
Yes.
That's really interesting.
Isn't it? Yeah, that's, I, I think, so this is all data that's collected by 802 Marketing. It is really interesting to see what people are looking for and what is on top, and if you go to the next one, Dan, this also shows you that, as I was saying, the, the organic searches that people are doing and that Vermont Begins Here is ranking 1, 2, 3, 4, this is also a list kind of starting at the top, and I know there are a lot of things here, it's a little bit hard to read, but it shows you that, you know, people are, and this is per month, so there's over 320 searches per month for Bennington Vermont Motels, for example. Bennington Vermont Breweries is very popular, over 320 searches a month. Bennington Breakfast, 210 plus searches per month. And these are also kind of variations, so not exactly these words per se, but, but these different themes. Garlic Fest is a, is a huge one, Fall and Fall Foliage, Bennington Vermont Antiques, Covered Bridges, Old Bennington, White Rocks, Mayfest, Midnight Madness, Vermont Foliage Drives, Appalachian Trail, Best Hiking Near Bennington, Bennington Vermont Bars, Campgrounds Near Bennington, and Southern Vermont Summer Camps. Those were all kind of top searches that people are finding through Vermont Begins Here. So our goals in the coming year, and I'm working closely with the Town's Communication Coordinator, Jonah Spivak, in part because, you know, he's my office mate, but also Jonah is a longtime business owner and graphic designer who has an extensive background in marketing Bennington. So we really sat down together, and our focus this coming year is going to be on more creative content. That's also the feedback that we're getting from 802 Marketing. When this campaign started, we have these, these wonderful vibrant photographs that are really making up the website, but it is now, you know, almost four years into it, so it's time to start, you know, really getting out, getting more photos of downtown Bennington, more events, outdoor recreation and all seasons. So that's, that's one of the focuses we want to have for the coming year, as well as more creative writing and blog content. We, just so that everyone knows, all of our content is local talent, so we're hiring Bennington-based photographers and writers to do everything that we do. And we don't have a very large marketing budget, but I think that's important, that we're, we're really keeping it local. And then we want to do more cross promotion with our partners at the Chamber and the Better Bennington Corporation so that the Vermont Begins Here directory is, is really going to be very evident on their sites, but also we're promoting them all the time, you know, all of the events that they're doing. So those are our, our big goals, and then we also are going to use some of the, the marketing funds to create some new welcome signs at each entrance to town, because even though that's not exactly in keeping with everything we're doing with marketing, we think that that's an important need, and, and we just had those designed, and they'll be coming soon. And then I'm going to open it up to questions.
Great. Questions?
Uh, to?
Yep, anyone from the board?
Do you want to start with the board?
Go, Jeanne.
That was really great to hear all that. I'm curious, and you may not know, and COVID hit, do you have a sense of where those numbers of visits, subscribers, followers, where they started and where they ended up, and if there's been an increase over time?
Definitely an increase over time. In fact, there's another, I don't know if you can open it, Dan, but, but there's another, if you look on there, there's a Vermont Begins Here presentation that I did, I think at the very beginning, and when we, you know, back in, at the end of 2019, and we had something like 300, you know, email subscribers. So, so it's, it's certainly gone up, you know, oh, 2,000, 3,000 plus in followers since we began.
Great, that was the goal. Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Shannon, do you know what portion of the spend is in management fees to 802?
Yes, it's the, actually, I'll go, I'll just look at it on my notes here. If you go to the total spend on website management is, and the digital marketing management is $3,925. That's what we're spending with, annually with 802 Marketing.
That's the total that they charge us. Everything else goes to actual vendors.
Yes.
Thank you. That's a good deal, by the way.
It is a really good deal.
I just want to say from, you know, I'm in that space, that's where I live, and we need to thank 802.
They're wonderful. And again, you know, a local company, they've, they've moved on and expanded, and they have another site in North Carolina, but their, their Bennington staff are the ones managing. And part of why, you know, we did a request for proposals when the website was first developed, and 802 came in at, they did it at half the cost because they just really wanted to promote Bennington. So, so they're, they've been great to work with.
Other questions from the board?
Any questions from the community?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sam Ristino, I have a few. Bus tours that come into town, do we still get them? I haven't seen a bus in Bennington in a long, long time, spend time. The videos that were in the past that were done with Channel 10, W T E N, and we're thinking about doing those again, Bennington Begins Here, Cat TV produced those videos. I encourage that we do something like that, update them. And the biggest generation, generating the video screens that you see on buses, like in Albany and, and the Metropolis, we've got Fremont Express. How about getting a couple of, of video screens that are on the bus that goes up to Manchester with all this advertisement about our businesses on there? So people are visionaries. When the buses go through downtown Manchester, Shasbury, or other places, that video's in front of people's eyes.
What do you mean, people are visionaries? Other, other questions?
What about the videos? Mike?
Sure.
I started an ad campaign for downtown Bennington.
Mike, introduce yourself first.
My, my, uh, and all I asked was for a few, I think it was about $2,000. So she said no, so I said, we did it on our own. And in the banner, we've had June 2, half-page ads twice a month, July, August, we've had one, we've been over another one towards the end for Garlic Fest. I think you ought to put more money in the banner doing that. I think some of this money should also go towards the BBC. We built a splash park with a very, very nice venue of a stage and everything else. We need to put on more concerts, not less. People word of mouth will get people to come to Bennington, and the consciousness that the BBC has put off has been very, very good. I mean, I don't think there's been one bad one. And I think some of this $40,000, quite honestly, is wasted, and if you go back to, I don't know which one, the slides were showed, Motels was the first one, Hotels, can you put that one back up? Can you do that? Right there, it says Bennington Vermont Motels, Breweries, blah, blah, blah. I don't see anything there on entertainment or weekly venues that people would want to come to and say, hey, instead of going east, west, north, whatever, I'm going to go down to Bennington. And like I said, one, my piece, I think I wrote, I don't remember which one it was, for talks, I've got, Paul has 3,500 residents, Shasbury has 3,500, that's about 7,000. Bennington has 16,000, okay? You do the math. I'm talking at 23,000, 24,000, almost in a stone's throw. If we could get those people to concentrate on our downtown, not just for the breweries and everything else, but the small shops, the venues, the restaurants, breakfast, everything like that, I think some of this money should be spent there. And also, if you had given me some of the money, Cat TV for $1,500 will do a promo for us and send it all through the state and all pig access. That's what we want. I really don't think we're going to draw many people from Albany. We've been trying that for years. We do get New York plates, we do have people, I talked to some people the other day, was from Michigan or something, in different places, because I hang out down there, because in the winter I can't really get out. But I think we can do more, more locally to help these downtown shoppers. And motels, I think the motels must be off. Maybe Ed could talk about that. I don't know, have you guys done well this year or get down?
No personal, no personal.
Oh, come on, for God's sakes.
Nope, nope.
You know, so I'd like to see more money given to the BBC for entertainment. I'd like to see more put into Cat TV, and quite honestly, I'd like to do the campaign again next year with the banner.
And just to clarify, this list, this isn't a list that we've made, this is what people are searching for of their own accord. So just kind of across the board, organic searches that people from all over are looking for, this is what's coming up.
For entertainment.
That's not top of the list, but I think the more, it's not on these top searches that I mentioned, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen if, if certain things start to get promoted.
Well, I would argue that Garlic Fest and Covered Bridges and hiking and Midnight Madness and Mayfest, et cetera, are all entertainment.
Oh, yeah, and there's things, I mean, it, it just shows you kind of what Bennington is known for, or what people are looking for.
Yeah.
But to Mike's other point about the BBC, so the spending that I showed you was through June. For July, I did work with the BBC and...
I can't hear her.
Excuse me?
There's too much, there's cross conversation.
I did work with the BBC, they put out an ad for their event series, and, and we collaborated through the, with the banner, and when I spoke to you about it, I didn't just say no, but what I said is that...
You said no.
No, I, I said, the town can't do an ad in the banner for an individual business, but what we, what we did do was we supported an ad of the BBC's event series, and I said, if you want to work together and get sponsors from business...
That's what I told you. Did you see the ad?
You actually told me no, that you were going to do it yourself, so I'm just putting the record straight.
I don't know, I can't measure if it did anything.
Well, and that, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mike.
No back and forth, okay?
Well, no, but I'm glad that you mentioned that, and I think the measurement piece is really important because that is why we're focused on the digital marketing. We can measure it. When we only are really spending about $2,100 a month on those ads, we have to know that that's, that it's worth our time and our money. And when we put out, you know, when we put out the print ads, we can't get those same results that we can through the digital ads.
And you're also, Shannon, I mean, back to the purpose of this, this is to bring people from outside, and this is not internal advertising.
Right.
So if I could just make a comment to that, that's, I think, very important. We got some good suggestions from the two folks that spoke. The, the idea of being on billboards on the sides of buses, that backs up all the good work that's being done. So if we had an unlimited budget, I would encourage us to do that.
Right.
The idea that we're, we're marketing or advertising right in Bennington with, with space in the Bennington Banner backs up everything that we're doing here. There's nothing being wasted here because we're targeting here. So if we had an unlimited budget, I would encourage us to look at those things. I think I lost my, my train of thought there, but that was, the, the points that I wanted to make were, there, there's nothing wasted in what we're doing here.
But I may want to suggest, I will take $1,500 next year or this year, if it was a Cat TV, you see a promo that they could put up that we would put out free of charge to all of the pig access stations in Vermont.
It's an interesting idea, so when budget season comes, please come to the budget work sessions, because that's where we, that's where we make those decisions.
I don't know what budget is. But we, we, we tell you at the beginning of that discussion, if you've done very good, you've done very good, well, we're doing good, I don't know. But you need to have fun events weekly to get people here, not just Garlic Fest and Mayfest. Those merges downtown deserve a little bit better than what they're getting.
Everyone needs to turn around and look out the windows.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
I'll shut out the door.
Shannon, can I ask, is there any way of knowing, so the, so the 81,000 total visits, that includes the paid ads and organic searches, right? Is there any way of knowing sort of, is that, is that a high number, is that a, an average number? I mean, how do we, how do we, I mean, we just look for it to go up and that, and that's...
The real number, the real number there is conversion rate. And so when, when Shannon said that the goal is 15%, I want to tell you that that's a very high bar, 15%, and we've exceeded it.
Yeah, but if you have 15% of, you know, five people, that's...
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So I just...
So are, so are we seeing year-over-year growth?
We are. We saw a bump kind of post-COVID when every, and actually even somewhat during COVID when, you know, more people were traveling, more people are doing kind of small road trips close to home. I think this summer, that has waned a little bit because people are getting, are flying more and going further afield. But in general, yes, we've seen a yearly growth. But that's a good question, Jeanne. I think that I, that's a question I can take back to 802 Marketing as far as the total number, and do we have a, you know, kind of how much more, how much further can we, do we want to go? And I think, you know, doing the paid ads, but also really getting more traffic with our other partners, I mean, particularly the Chamber, to just really push this out as the Bennington Directory, I think, is another way to get, get the word out.
I don't know if there would be a way to quantify if the business owners, the restaurant owners, the hoteliers have seen an increase. With COVID, it just messed everything up, that, you know, what, whatever progress we were making may have been stalled, but ultimately, that's the goal, is that, you know, the businesses are reaping the benefits of this, and I, I don't know if there's a way to parse that out.
That's a good question. I mean, maybe we could, we could start measuring that through a survey with them, you know? You know, and I know that there's like the meals and rooms tax piece too, that I think that the state looks at, and that you could look at locally.
Yeah, and one, one, like if there's an increase in weddings, there's going to be an increase of people needing hotels and people eating in the restaurants, so, you know, one, one...
And those targeted, those targeted Facebook ads that I mentioned really are focused on what we know people are searching for. So those ads are, you know, looking for a place to stay in Bennington, you know, here are great eateries in Bennington, breweries, et cetera. So I mean, it really is trying to drive people to those sites, as well as the blog posts are often about, you know, having a stay at a local inn, or going out to having an eating experience, et cetera. Having people go visit the Bennington Museum, the last blog post was about the For the Love of Vermont exhibit that's up there now.
Yeah. Zero.
Yeah, so I thank you for reporting on this, and I just have a little note, and that says, you know, Chamber, BBC, and feeling like some things are siloed, but you mentioned that. Would you come back and report, you know, at some point?
Sure.
Yeah, and thank you for coming, and can we move on to the next slide?
Can I ask you, before you go, is this an opportunity to work with the Chamber? I'm thinking about the Chambers report that just came out. I'm thinking about the Chamber's report that just came out saying that business owners in, in the area are feeling very good about what's happening? And I'm wondering if there's a way to maybe target some of the questions that the Chamber asks its members about how do they, you know, what makes them feel like they're doing well?
Right. Yeah, definitely. I think that's something that I can talk with the Chamber about and then follow up as well as any, and if you come up with any other questions that are in your minds, you know, feel free to send me an email because I'm, I'm communicating every month with 802 Marketing and I can, I can ask them to, to dig in for some more information as well.
Is, is the website interactive at all? Like, could they ask a question? How likely is it that you'll visit Bennington and what will, is there, is there a mechanism that they could do that and maybe?
We, we tend to direct people to the visitor's center.
Yeah.
You know, but we don't really have a question and answer thing on the website itself. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was great.
This is really, this is really informative.
Really nice.
Wonderful. Okay. Quick item next, we hope. So we now have two openings on the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, the CPARB, and we have one opening on the Historic Preservation Commission. And so with three openings on those two critical boards, we were hoping to be able to reopen a search, have it run hopefully starting tomorrow through the end of the month, and then beginning of September, do interviews. And then for CPARB, that would give six weeks to do training with the police. And Brian Core is coming back with Kelly and also with Merrill to look at open meeting law and just, you know, being, being compliant. So I am hoping we can do that. Could I have a motion to re, to open up applications for those two boards?
So, second.
Great. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm wondering if we could read, you know, explore the options of the applicants had, applied previously.
They can always reapply.
And send out a reminder, say, hey, these are open. Would you like to reapply? That's something I would like to do.
Okay, sure. That's very straightforward to do.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Question, would these three open positions be finishing terms that are ongoing?
Yes, they would. So one would be, one CPAR position would be
June 24th.
And the other
The BBC also requires June 24th.
Okay, okay.
But we are essentially creating
The other CPAR is 2026.
The new CPAR position will be a three-year period.
Yeah.
So three years from June?
So we've got a 24, a 26 on the CPAR.
Gotcha.
And then a 24 on, on the Historic Preservation.
June 30th of each of those years. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, ready to vote? Any questions, comments from the public? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, super, thank you. All right. And then on to the manager's report. And I just want to clarify, the reason the manager's report is really not open for questions to the select board is that it is literally a report by the manager to the select board on things that we just need to be aware of. If you have questions on anything on the manager's report, it's best to catch our town manager either after the meeting, which is not the greatest time, but, you know, in the office so that you can actually talk with him. Because in general, other than the select board asking him questions, this is when we're learning about whatever the issues are.
Stu does have a question.
He does, indeed.
Speaking from experience, our town manager is accessible.
All right, so Stu, you're up.
All right, I've got three action items for you this evening. The first has to do with the Garlic Town road closures. The Chamber is seeking to close Depot Street. Garlic Town this year will be really focused around the Depot Street, the town office parking lot, and I'm sorry, the Bennington Station parking lot. The former Tuttle's property will be the main focuses of Garlic Town this year. So we're looking to close Depot Street on Saturday, September 2nd, from 6:00 AM until 6:00 PM for Garlic Town. They will make arrangements to work with merchants who are open for periods of time there to make sure that they get, their customers can get through. But that would be a, a full closure approved by the board. As, as I indicate here, there will be temporary closures throughout, beginning on August 30th. Those need only be approved by the manager because we're basically either redirecting traffic or closing the street for a short period of time. So don't need your support.
So can I ask, it feels like we've been through this before. This, it sounds like the Chamber has not approached the businesses that would be impacted on Depot Street yet.
That may be true. I don't know.
I'm uncomfortable with voting on this without that conversation because there are businesses that do a lot of business on Saturday. So I just, I just want to make sure that there is a plan for those businesses.
We have two weeks and one more slot for
Yeah.
And the Chamber will give it, stop, give it, are we giving them enough time?
Doing.
So, yes, so as, as, yeah, so I think that this needs to be approved at this moment because they typically, as someone had, they typically do that the morning of or the day before to close off that street and let businesses know.
So they could do that on the 24th, yeah.
They could do that the day before or the week leading up to, just to say, this is what's happening. We can make accommodations for your business for it to be
How will they make accommodations if they're closed?
They will visit each business specifically.
They'll what?
Make, visit each business specifically.
I know, but they haven't done it yet.
They need to know that this is closed off before that happens. If they don't know it's closed off, they won't make accommodations.
So the, in the last time this happened, last year, we did not vote until the Chamber actually went and spoke with everyone and everybody was okay. And I think the issue might have been alcohol at that point, alcohol in the adjacent property to GBIX. But this time, we're saying that, that GBIX, which does Saturday morning business and then also has community cafe in the afternoon, I, I'm just wondering how, how that business manages, I more easily, well, I'm not sure, maybe I can figure out how. And then what does Anytime Fitness do? It just, it just feels like they should talk to these folks before asking us to close the road.
That's a very fair question. We're a seven-person board, so that's, yeah, that's fair. Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, so I think back to Jim's question, if, if they go have those conversations and then come and let us know that everything is okay, does, does voting on this on the 24th give them enough time?
No. I, I would, I would make it contingent upon their notifying all the businesses.
And the businesses okay, and the businesses agree?
Well, you know, we, we close streets in Bennington for many events. Not every business may agree. I, I understand the concern, there are, there are a few businesses on that street that only have that one access, and I understand that. And I think they have worked with them before in past Garlic Town experiences. But I, I think to, to have every business have to approve the closure, I mean, I think you're starting to limit, what, what are we gonna do when we close for Mayfest? Are we gonna ask every business owner if they approve? We don't.
And then how about when we close down School Street, are you gonna ask every ten residents there? Because I know one resident there that left a jet.
I, I think also, had there not been many moving parts, they might have asked for this in January.
Well, I'm just wondering how, how we do this so that if, I, I mean, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to think about how GBIX is gonna have, I mean, maybe they just close down that Saturday.
I'm gonna make a call tomorrow morning to the Chamber match appearing.
No, I understand that, but we're
And tell them to get on the march. This is contingent, and you contact these people within the next 24 hours where we're gonna rescind this approval. We can do that.
Okay. All right, well, does somebody want to come up with a, a motion then that, that has some teeth?
I need Bruce.
Huh?
We need Bruce.
I would like to make a motion to I make a motion to close Depot Street on September 2nd as requested.
With a stipulation?
No, that's my motion.
Okay, all right.
Call the question.
No, there has to be a second. Do I have a second? Do I have a different motion that could have a second?
Can we, can we revise Sarah's motion to say that we approve the closure of Depot Street as requested with the stipulation that the Chamber will contact each impacted business with accommodations? And when, and I'll ask, so hold that thought for a second. I'm assuming that these conversations were had in years past, and so an accommodation might be for GBIX or for Anytime Fitness. Parking is available here and signage for your business will be in that parking area. And, and that was a messy motion, but I think you guys know where we're going.
Okay, so we have a second, a discussion?
If that's a compromise, I'm okay with that, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion?
So a second, yeah, the second.
All right, good. All right, so, ready? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, super, all right.
So we, we have work to do tomorrow, somebody?
Yeah. So who, who's letting the Chamber know tomorrow? You, Stu.
Of course me.
Thank you, Stu.
That's good.
Second action item, as you probably read in the paper, we did receive a notice from the Property Evaluation and Review section of the Vermont Tax Department that we will be required to perform a reappraisal, given that our coefficient of dispersion has dropped below or above the 20%, not dropped, but increased above 20%. We must acknowledge receipt of that notice, which I have a document here for the chair to sign. It doesn't need a motion, but I can already tell you that John Antononi has already begun the process of developing a plan for reappraisal. I should note for the folks in Bennington that every year for the last, God knows how many years, more than 20 years, the State of Vermont has been sending Bennington in the range of $40,000 a year to assist us with the conduct of a reappraisal. We have, and I'm off the top of my head now, but over $700,000 in reserve for a reappraisal, should it be required. We have been very fortunate over the last number of years, 2008 being our last reappraisal, that we have not had to worry about it. But the purchase of properties during the COVID period has greatly skewed almost every grand list in the state of Vermont. Properties were being purchased sight unseen at prices far above their assessed values, and that has thrown most communities into this problem, with there are well over 150 that are gonna be facing the same thing. As far as we can tell, there are probably two or three appraisal firms that have the capability to do a reappraisal of this size. We have over 6,000 properties in Bennington, and they have to view 95% of those properties. So this is going to be a difficult undertaking for any company, but we have to develop a plan within 150 days and let the state know that we are in process. Whether or not we go forward in that timeframe, or whether it takes us several years to line up an appraisal firm, I don't think the state really minds as long as we're in compliance. So with that, I'm gonna pass this down to have the chair sign this. It only needs the chair signature, Sarah. So put that pen down. But I know that there was some, some conversation in Powell about questioning their, their coefficient of dispersion because they're much closer to the 20%. We're about a percent over, a percent and a half. So I don't think that we have perhaps an opportunity to appeal those determinations. I think they may be right that over time, those numbers will come down. Coefficient of dispersion might not change, but the, the appraised values may actually come more in line as properties, their sale values and their sale, actual sales actually begin to come back into reality, which we're already starting to see. Nonetheless, that's where we are. And the last thing is a certificate of approval of a salvage yard. And we do this every five years. We have one salvage yard in Bennington that is a licensed salvage yard. The Development Review Board has already signed off on this, and this does require a motion by the board to approve the location, which is on 471 Chapel Road. It is owned and operated by Joshua Green. It's an eight, eight and a half acre lot up on Chapel Road. And I would, after a motion is made and approved, I would circulate this for your signatures.
All right, someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
I just have a question. I don't know exactly what a salvage yard is, but is there any sort of inspection that has to happen as far as like oil getting into the groundwater and stuff like that?
There is a state inspection that is made of, of all salvage yards. The DRB has authority over salvage yards to approve or revoke permits. So I, do they specifically look at groundwater contamination or those? I, I really don't know with the state.
And I was just using that as an example. I just didn't know if there was like a bar that a salvage yard has to meet as far as protecting the environment.
This, I can tell you this particular yard does regular testing, I see that from out.
Awesome.
So there's, there are no environmental issues.
Thank you.
And it's been in place for at least 40 years or not more, so it's, it's, it's a longstanding
Yeah, happy to hear that.
Great. All right, any other questions? Shall we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstain. Okay.
And then the last thing I had, and if you've used the Willow Park Playground, we had had to close off one of the pieces of equipment there due to some concerns raised by our staff and after review by our insurer, by our insurer as well. It is a, it's called the Mesa Climber. It's actually a bridge to the slide, which is a very popular piece of equipment. There is a gap in the, in the slats of the bridge, and from our perspective, the fall protection is relatively minimal. It is certified by a playground operator and designer so that there is perhaps minimal liability on the town, but we are acting in a very conservative manner here in concert with our insurer. We're gonna replace that with a, a different piece of equipment that actually has greater fall protection, and that should be here, we hope, by, before the month is out. People who use the facility will find that that has been closed. We did that reluctantly, but we felt we had to. And that's all I have.
Is the playground company covering that? It needs to be replaced regardless, don't get me wrong, but is the playground company covering the cost of the replacement or is it?
No, because this, because this was certified by an independent playground certification system, we don't believe we can hold them responsible. It is a, it's a piece that has been installed in other locations and has been used safely. In our case, we've had three incidents already where minor injuries were sustained by children attempting to use it.
Has someone at least made them aware of this?
Oh, they're very much aware.
Okay, great.
Do you say anything about County Street? Do you want to say anything about County Street?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
Do you want to say anything about County Street?
Other than it's paved?
Yeah!
Yes. I didn't include that because I was hoping it would be. And lo and behold, I drove in tonight and it is paved. So yes, County Street is paved.
Great. All right. Let's see.
I have a question on that playground at Willow Park.
Well, then you can catch up with Stu in the morning or after the meeting. All right. So, because this is not, all right.
I don't pay a dollar. I just kind of have.
Nancy? Nancy? Please. Upcoming agendas. So September 11th, we have Ben High, but next, next meeting, we have ECDC. We have refugee resettlement coming. Anything else?
I don't have anything at the present time for August 28th.
Except for ECDC. Yeah.
Except for ECDC. I'm sure there will be something that comes along.
Okay, I'm sure. Okay. All right. And then September 11th, Ben High will be.
I've got a comment I have to make. As far as future agendas go, can you get somebody else to take a look at it? Because we're here past 8:30. And we, two hours ought to be enough to do with the town's business.
Please don't speak to me about that. I'm, I'm just here as your.
I've already, I've already chewed her out already.
You know, we move as fast as we can, but we want people to have an opportunity to speak.
Just a short agenda item. That's all.
Okay. Well, we've got a short agenda, it looks like, next time. All right. Other business? Anything, Sarah? Gary?
Nothing.
Kudos to the pretty girl right down here at the end of the table.
If it's Sarah.
Sarah. And Betsy Shapiro-Greenwald for the success of this, of the food cart thing. It was, it was fabulous. It really was. You two did a really good job on it. Sam, I'm talking right now.
Go ahead.
It was just really well done. And I congratulate you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Anything, Jean?
I would just like to thank Bernie for coming to town last week and talking to a bunch of wonderful community members up at the pavilion on East Road. It was great.
Super.
Did I see that the Tuttle Lot is listed for sale? Anybody else know that?
The Tuttle Lot is, has actually been sold.
It's listed, it is online for sale.
It and its so far work, right? Its plans so far, it looked like? It and its plans are listed for sale. Yeah, as permitted.
That's a permitted site for being held.
Gotcha.
That's all I don't know.
Okay.
The price is to be on this side.
I, I was interested to know if anybody else knew. Thank you.
All right. All right. Well then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.